With our special meeting, the North Idaho Fair Board Quarterly Update. Today's date is March 18th, 2025. The time is 3:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matari. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Anyone want to speak? Hearing none. We'll move on to our first item. Fair Board Retreat. It's a discussion item, and we have our Fair Director, Alexia Jordan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Alexia Jordan, General Manager of Cooten County Fairgrounds. For the record, we're going to just give you an update on our recent Fair Board Retreat. The Fair Board Retreat was held March 1st. The Fair Board hosts this annually to discuss, you know, all of the businesses for the year, plans, what's coming. And this year, we had the privilege of welcoming Rae O'Day, the Executive Director of the National Independent Concessioniers Association, to present on two topics. She spoke on board governance, roles and responsibilities, as well as blue ribbon guest services. In an effort for to foster collaboration, we extended our invitation to our neighboring fair boards and management teams. And we were thrilled to have representation from Boundary, Bonner, Bennoah, LeToa, and Nez Perce County join us. The event was really well received, and we were proud to have such a high-quality speaker come in to benefit not just Cooten County, but our neighbors as well. And a special thank you to Commissioner Matari for coming and attending part of that.
Thank you.
That was great. So, that was just an update.
Any questions? No questions. Hearing nothing. We'll move on to Item 2. Upcoming events. Alexia?
All right. Just want to highlight two events that are coming up that benefit our fairgrounds and our community. All the events obviously benefit the community, but these two in particular hold a special place in our hearts. The North Idaho Fair and Rodeo Foundation is hosting their 11th Annual Cowboy Ball coming up April 18th. This is a signature event that happens every year, and annually it produces or generates about $90,000 that is in support of capital improvements, youth scholarships, and agricultural educational programming there at the fairgrounds. Last year, their contributions contributed to enhancing lighting on the chill zone, which improves visibility and safety. We were able to upgrade infrastructure for power requirements on several locations on the fairgrounds and support the Farm-to-Table program, which educates nearly 2,000 5th graders of Cooten County every season. With that, Farm-to-Table is coming up quickly, May 12th through 15th. You guys have, in the past, sometimes been able to stop in, see some of it, or help serve lunch. We would love to invite you to join us again. And with that, on May 12th, we do a Meet a Farmer Dinner. And if you haven't come to that, that's an event that brings together local farmers and ranchers in our community and members of the community to come together to learn, connect, and enjoy a delicious, locally sourced dinner together. So, we'd love for you to be a part of that, and if you want more information, let me know.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to Item Number 3. 2025 Fair Update. Alexia?
Okay. This is the fun part, always. The 2025 North Idaho State Fair is coming faster than ever, as usual it seems, but August 15th through the 24th, and planning's well underway. We're excited to bring you another 10 days of fun for our community once again. The final concert announcement will be made this Monday, and I think everybody's going to be very excited about it. Presales for all other events are currently on, and the rodeo is selling quickly. The first concert is also selling really quickly. So, we're really happy to see those pre-sale numbers really strong again this year. A little update on our livestock program. Our initial beef weigh-in will take place this Sunday. This allows us to track their annual rate or their daily rate of gain while they're on feed. This year, I'm personally really excited about us evaluating a sample set of carcasses where we can analyze the meat quality that we're producing here. And fun fact about your local Cooten County youth, we have some of the most competitive youth, and they are participating throughout the Western United States and beyond. And we just have some really outstanding youth role models out there in our livestock program, so something to be very proud about. On the entertainment side, we're bringing back by popular demand pig races and a lumberjack show, and I think that really keeps with our theming efforts of keeping traditions alive. We'll have some other exciting things pop up, but I can't share the details quite yet. One of them, we just heard about today, and I think Jerry and I are really excited. So, we'll, when it comes together, we will share. And then I'd like to invite you to some key events during the fair, and I will send you official invitations for those. But the annual traditional Commissioners' Apple Pie contest will be Thursday, August 21st. The grand opening ceremony is going to be Friday, August 15th at 4:00 PM. And then, just like last year, we would like to ask one of you guys to be a speaker. And immediately following that, we'll do a VIP social and, and bring in some entertainment and some, some VIP guests, and I would like to have you all be a part of that if you are able.
And I think last year, there was a baby alligator.
Yes.
As one of the attendees.
We'll be sure to bring something else fun in this year to keep you guys.
Okay.
Entertained.
Any questions? Well, there is one thing I don't think you mentioned, and that has to do with the ribbon that's on your.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Table that was.
So, this is a copy and steal idea. I have to give the credit to the LeToa County Fair. Their General Manager brings the Commissioners each a ribbon for the Commissioners' Choice Award. So, I've purchased, or we, the Fair Board, has purchased each of you a ribbon to award. And the idea behind this is it can go to anything in the fair. It can be an exhibit. It can be a person. It can be an entertainer. Whatever it is about the fair that you think makes it special, you have this award to give. And it's just a fun addition. It could be apple pie, absolutely. Absolutely.
But it can't be ourselves, right?
Well, I mean, you can award it to each other. That could get fun.
Okay. Well, that's a separate discussion. Okay. Thank you. Any comments, questions by the Board? No. Hearing none. We'll move on to Item 4. EMS Standby for Fair Arena Events, Cooten County Fire and Rescue. And we have Leanna Kaiser.
Yes, Leanna Kaiser, for the record. Thank you. So, every year, we, Alexia and I are very familiar with trying to sort this out every year. So, we thought maybe this would be a good time to sort it out before we actually have the fair, and we have this invoice coming. We can talk about it together and figure out how we're going to manage this, this invoice that comes in every year. This is for the EMS standby services that are for the events in the arena. So, like concerts, the demolition derby, the rodeo. Anything else besides that? That pretty much covers them.
There's 10 events, so.
So, so all those 10 days worth of events. We have budgeted for this year $8,500. Last year, the invoice was over $10,000. So, we paid the $8,500, and the fair picked up the balance. So, or I'm sorry. Last year, we, we paid $8,000, and they paid the balance. This year, we've budgeted $8,500. So, just would like, while we're all in the room together, we could figure out how this is going to be managed when we get the bill. Are, is, are we paying the $8,500 we budgeted, and the fair is paying the balance? Or is the Board paying the whole thing? Or how, how are we managing it this year?
Is that question to the Board or to the fair?
Yes, to the Board with the fair here to answer questions. So, we, like I said, we budgeted $8,500. Do you have an estimate what you think it will be this year?
So, the, the back history is that you guys set the budget well before we even are able to order those services, and we, none of us knew that their rates were going to increase so much. So, we based it on the historical amount that it's been, and it, it came in well over that. So, and, and that next budget cycle, I think, was also determined before you got that bill.
Yes.
So, I think we're just at a disadvantage of not knowing what their rates were going to increase to, and, and we just have to make the adjustment. So, I will say that in addition to those bills, the Fair Board is already paying around $11,500 for first aid services during the fair. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Does anyone up here have any comments or thoughts on that?
I, I think part of the excellent service and excellent running that you've done is you've been able to bring in more money than it costs to run the fair. And so, this is part of, you know, I'm, I'm happy to continue to, to do the tradition of the $8,500, but I think that with the amount that you guys bring in with the fair, that it's, you know, $2,000 isn't a whole lot to cover. And again, trying to continually make the fair self-supporting, you know? And $8,500 really isn't much for the taxpayers to shoulder. However, you, you know, you guys make that additional income, and so I think that's appropriate.
Commissioner Eberlein? Thoughts? No. The only thing I would maybe ask the fair to consider is the fact that, you know, there's a lot of flexibility with raising money and utilizing the space throughout the year. And the more that the fair can pick up on these expenses and not ask the taxpayer to cover them, I think only just reinforces the fact that the fair is a self-sufficient entity. It doesn't draw any tax dollars. You know, I'm okay with sticking with what we've had in the past, but I'm just kind of throwing that out there as an idea. I think that there's no question that you and the Board have done a fantastic job in, you know, raising the kind of money that you can put back into the fair, into the infrastructure and things like that. But there's a difference between saying we are 99% self-reliant or 100% self-reliant, and this is that, this is one of those areas. So, I'm just putting it out there as something to think about.
And, and what I will say too is the University of Idaho Extension Office, they're going to need to, they have asked the Commissioners for more money, and it's about $8,700. So, we don't know until we get into budget season what we're going to be able to approve and not approve. So, if the fair were able to cover all of it, then we would be able to put in FY '26, FY '25, we're good. But if the fair were to cover, you know, 100%, then we would be able to put that money directly towards U of I extension. And they haven't had any addition since, it's either been three or four budget years that they have not had an increase.
So, it's, I know it's something that hasn't been discussed before, but it's just something to put out there as a consideration. But that's where my thoughts are. Yes?
Question, maybe it's for legal counsel. Are we mandated who we do the standby and who we utilize for EMS at the fair? I mean, can a person reach out to an AMR or someone else or a different fire district? Even though I know we're in the Cooten Fire District, but can we reach out on something like that?
Dave had said, no, not to his knowledge, but if you wanted to ask Pat for legal opinion on that?
Well, I'm just wondering. They just keep going up, 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 and they've, they're living on our fairgrounds.
Oh, no.
I mean, we're as troubled by this as you are. We used to have a co-op where we had different fire districts doing the EMS side of it. I think Cooten Fire always did the standby, but the EMS, you know, on the grounds was a co-op by other fire districts, but.
That's a good question.
Random question.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah. I'm good with you asking counsel, you know, on that.
So, is the direction that we'll pay, we'll pay the 80, up to the $8,500 that we budgeted for this year for the fair that's going to happen in August?
For right now, unless, you know, the fair has a different idea, which, you know, I would hope to see that. But, you know, then again, by asking the question about which entity you're using, you know, you may be constrained with just one, and if you're not, maybe you'll have better options before you.
And then as far as FY budget year, then yeah, I would still say that you budget that $8,500, and whether it goes to the fair or U of I.
Okay.
You know, we'll have to figure that out when we know what we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that covers Items A and B under 4. So, with that said, we'll move on to Item 5. It's an executive session, and I will take a, actually, you know, what we could do is probably public comment.
Yeah.
And that way, people don't have to sit around. So, anyone want to speak? Anybody on the phone or on, oh, come on up?
Tim Bolles, I just got a question on the money on the fire district. When these guys are working at the fair, are they on overtime? Are they getting paid additional, or are they actually on duty?
You'd have to ask KCFR. Wait, yeah, the county has some.
If they're already on duty, are they getting extra money for this, or are they getting paid extra on overtime? That's my only question. I mean, are they double-dipping or?
It's a good question.
So, does the fire department hang around out there?
What, what do you mean?
Well, is the fire department present on the grounds?
Well, their new fire station is within the boundary of the fairgrounds, but we're required on these events to have a literal standby ambulance, like at the rodeo, you know? So, we couldn't, they're probably can't sit in the fire station and come. They got to be there right at, parked at the end of their arena. But that's a good question, Tim asks, and we could visit with Chief Way about that, who they are, you know? But I would assume they're a separate crew. You know, they're not the crew sitting in the fire station.
Don't assume.
Just, just that.
Good question. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? No? Okay. All right. Well, we're going to move into executive session. I will take a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho 742061D.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair.